Good evening, and I call to order our Tuesday, July 17th, 2018, Pickle City Commission Meeting to order. And let us stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have our roll call, please?
Mayor Heinz.
Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Short.
Here.
Commissioner Martin.
Here.
Commissioner Vogt.
Here.
Okay, the first thing after that is announcements. Do we have any announcements this evening? If not, we will move to our consent agenda.
Yes, our consent agenda tonight is the approval of the minutes from the July 3rd Commission meeting.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The consent agenda passes. And now we move to our new business. The first is Resolution Number R-101-18.
A resolution authorizing a purchase order to Compass Minerals America, Inc., for the purchase of road salt for the street department.
Yes, tonight, Mr. Brian Brookhart, Assistant Street Superintendent, will give the staff report.
Good evening. As you know, we come forward this time of year, every year, in July, when it's hot, and talk about snow and salt. We belong to an organization named Southwest Ohio Purchasers for Government, which bid out a road salt purchase on behalf of approximately 89 different entities. And the city of Pickle has participated in this joint bid successfully for many years. This year's price is going to come in at $89.69 per ton, which is higher than last year's cost, where we paid $49.88 per ton. You can review the bid result summary marked in Exhibit A in your packets. We're estimating our usage to be around 2,500 tons, and we have been required this year that we'll have to purchase at least 2,000 tons during the season, which will cost us
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the Commission on this resolution?
How much do we have left from last year?
We have a little over 500 tons in a barn still.
Did we get 2,500 tons last year?
We used very close to that, yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes. It depends on the season. It was a little rougher last year, so we got very close to that. There can be years that we don't use that much, but on average, that's what we average.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
It's like a $40 increase.
Yes.
Is it, they don't have it, or what? Is there shortage?
That's not unusual for supply and demand. When you have a colder winter, they sell, when they sell a lot more salt, they just anticipate it's going to, you know, they're anticipating they're either not keeping up with mining, or they may not be able to keep up with the supply. So, we see this when we have cold, rough winters, and we typically see a decrease in price when we have a milder winter the following year. So, it's not unusual to see that. I mean, we've seen it go from like around the price that we paid all the way up over $100 a ton just a few years back. So, it's certainly not as expensive as it has been in the past, but still a lot more than what we paid last year.
Thank you.
Yes.
Well, and if you look at the bid tabulation for other cities, it's right in where everybody else is too, obviously, so.
Yeah, everybody's dealing with the same type of increase as we are.
Yeah, okay. All right. Any other questions or comments from the Commission on this resolution? Any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
It's a move. Second.
Has been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Resolution Number R-101-18 passes. And now we move to Resolution Number R-102-18.
A resolution awarding a contract to Tree Care, Inc., for the 2018 Annual Tree Removal, Pruning, and Emergency Tree Removal.
Ms. Amy Havener, the city engineer, will present the report tonight.
Thank you. In 2017, we bid our annual tree removal and pruning and emergency removal contract, and that contract was awarded to Tree Care, Inc. And as part of the bid, after the first year, there was a clause in there for the contractor to be able to hold their bids for three additional years. So, we would like to come back this year and award it again for 2018. We've had good success with Tree Care. They've been a good company to work with, and they've done us a really good job for the city.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments from the Commission?
Now, this is a different company than the one that clears for the power lines, correct?
Yes, Nelson, Nelson Tree Service does the power line.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the Commission?
Yeah, why are we going with Tree Care when they're higher than Blade Cutters Incorporated?
Blade Cutters Incorporated? It's part of our bids last year, we put, they had to have a certified arborist on staff, and there were a couple of other issues that Blade Cutters could not comply with. They did not have all the equipment that was needed in case of emergency. But the biggest issue was the certified arborist, because then you have the safety practices that follow. The one they listed did not even work for the company when we did reference checks. So, they did not comply with our specs.
All right, thank you.
Anything else? Any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move we adopt Resolution R-102-18.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Resolution Number R-102-18 passes. And now we move to Resolution Number R-103-18.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with LJB, Inc., for the environmental services for the Great Miami River Trail Bridge Project.
Ms. Amy Havener, the city engineer again.
Thank you. In 2017, the city hired Lockwood Jones &amp; Beals to go ahead and complete, or begin, the design of the Great Miami River Recreational Trail Bridge. We are looking to relocate that, what is the existing bridge behind the power plant, move that south to the Goodrich Giles Park. And they do have the design started, but since then, we were successful in receiving funding through Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission for a portion of the construction. So, now the next phase with the federal funding would be to start the environmental process. And after request for qualifications, we have selected Lockwood Jones &amp; Beals to complete the environmental assessment on the entire bridge structure.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the Commission on this resolution? Any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded, all those in favor of Resolution Number R-103-18 say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the resolution passes. And now we move to Resolution Number R-104-18.
A resolution authorizing the disposition of part of in-lot number 9042.
Yes, Mr. Ed Krieger, the Power Systems Director, will present the report tonight.
Thank you. As you're aware, we've been working quite some time on developing the utility-scale solar project on Staunton Street, and that project is essentially complete and generating power currently, and has been for a few weeks. To develop that project, we entered up securing two properties. We purchased the old Staunton Street School property, and we also purchased some property from the Heckmans that was adjacent to that. And then in addition, we performed a property swap with Custom Arisol, with the industry that's to the south, which is also owned by the Heckmans. Well, during the construction staking for the project, we identified that the south property line for the solar project was incorrectly conveyed during the property swap. The intent all along was to have a 25-foot border north of Custom Arisol, and as the property was staked, it was 15-foot. So, the item that you have before you tonight is basically to correct that property transfer to restore it to what was intended all along was to have a 25-foot border between Custom Arisol and the south border of the Staunton Street Solar Project.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the Commission on this resolution? Any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move to adopt Resolution R-104-18.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the resolution passes. And now we move to Resolution Number R-105-18.
A resolution to quit claim deed city interests in part of in-lots 581, 582, and 583.
Chris Meesing, our city planner, will present the report tonight.
Thank you. This item comes by way of a request from the private property owner of 124 North Roosevelt Avenue, which is known as Fensel Door Company. Mr. Kyle Fensel approached us and brought to our attention, after a recent survey he had completed, that there was a nine-foot discrepancy between his actual property line and the property line that he thought had been originally established by way of a conveyance that occurred in 1999. This pertains to the former Conrail Railroad right-of-way that the city acquired in 1987, and then subsequently in 1999, we conveyed a portion of that railroad right-of-way involving the lots that were referenced to the Fensel Door Company, to Mr. Kyle Fensel, to reflect the actual boundaries of the improvements on his property. So, what he's asking for is that we would quit claim deed, our interest in that nine-foot discrepancy, so that he can proceed with a replat survey, which will then allow for the legal description to be clean, and he would be able to convey the title of the property if he were to sell it.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from the Commission on this resolution? Do we have any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move we adopt Resolution R-105-18.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the resolution passes. And now we move to Resolution Number R-106-18.
A resolution requesting consent to award a contract to Environmental Assurance Company, Inc., for the former Mo's Lounge Asbestos Abatement Project.
Mr. Chris Meesing, city planner again.
Thank you. Yeah, once again, this pertains to the former Mo's Lounge property along the Great Miami River, which is located in our riverfront redevelopment area that we've identified. And in the riverfront district development strategy that was completed in 2015, this was one of the three catalytic projects that was identified as being critical to transforming this area and revitalizing the properties. Subsequently, we were successful in securing some USPA brownfield grant dollars to assist with the remediation work that needs to be done in this building to put it back into a condition where we can white box it, is the expression that you'll hear used, which basically means you're making it ready for an end-user to come in and do the renovation work necessary to fit the building out for a particular end-use. The contract, if authorized, would be to Environmental Assurance Company out of Indianapolis, Indiana. They were one of two bidders, and they satisfied all the bid specifications and provided the appropriate supplemental documents, and their reference checks were outstanding. They are prepared to begin with the work just as soon as we issue a notice to proceed, and they estimate it will take about 30 days to complete the environmental remediation work, which is very good, because we are kind of up against the clock here in completing the work and staying within our timeframe, so far as the cooperative grant agreement and the completion date that we originally indicated.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the Commission on this resolution? I will say it's exciting to know that we are starting on this, because I know people have been asking about getting that done, so we can then bring some development in there. So, that's exciting that that'll start somewhere around the 1st of August, then.
Tentatively, August 1st is realistic. This is really the first phase. Once the environmental remediation work is done, we also have some grant dollars through the Community Development Block Grant Program that will allow us to go forward with making the building weather tight and taking the addition off the back of the building, removing the ugly, prepping it for the white box condition.
That's great, okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the Commission? Any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for the resolution.
Has been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the resolution passes. And now we move to Resolution Number R-107-18.
A resolution of authorization to submit an application for Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvement and Local Transportation Improvement Programs, and to execute contracts as required for the catch basin replacement project.
Yes, I'd like to call in Ms. Janelle Ranley, our Development Program Manager.
Hi, thank you. So, the city will apply for the grant funding from OPWC for $200,000. The total project cost is $255,000, with the remaining $55,000 set to come out of the city's stormwater funds. The project is set to replace 100 catch basins throughout the city. These 100 catch basins were chosen after 3,000 catch basins were inspected throughout the city and scored for their deterioration. The project, if we receive the grant, is scheduled to start in 2019.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the Commission on this resolution? Any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for Resolution Number R-107-18 to approve.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the resolution passes. And now we move to the public comment portion of the meeting. Do we have any public comment this evening? If not, we will move to the assistant city managers' report.
Thank you. We'd like to invite all of the Commissioners to join the city employees for the employee picnic, which will be coming up on August 10th, from 11:30 to 1:30 at Fountain Park. So, hopefully you can join us all that day. I know the employees are really interested and like to confront you and join in the festivities. I think there's going to be cornhole tournaments again, some of you might do that, and I heard that there's going to be the Susie's Ice Creams. So, hopefully we can all get together for a fun luncheon.
That's great, thank you. And we also have the Staunton Solar Project update by Mr. Ed Krieger, our Power Director.
Thank you. Several meetings back, Commissioner Martin had asked if it'd be good to kind of weigh back in on the project and give some background information and progress on the Staunton Solar Project. So, I think tonight's timely. As I mentioned, the project is essentially complete. We are receiving a lot of, I'm receiving emails and calls, and people are really interested in the project. It's all been really positive, having heard the first negative comment about the project to date. Talked to the President of the Shawnee Neighborhood the other day, and we're going to be sharing some information on the landscaping plans that will come about later in the fall. But I'd like to walk through the presentation and kind of get everybody up to the same level of understanding. So, again, Staunton Solar Project, we started this process well over two years ago. Been through 12 public meetings, and through the City Commission, the Pickle School Board, the city's planning commission, and also through the city energy board. So, it's been a very thorough process, and I think a pretty fulfilling one as well. So, just to give some overview, because these are some of the questions that I'm receiving, and hopefully this will help as you receive questions. But how we're in this project is because we're a member of AMP, American Municipal Power, and they basically take care of our power supply for our customers. All of our resources come through AMP for the most part. And this project is called the AMP Solar Phase 2 Project. It's basically a power purchase agreement between AMP and Nextera, who's a very large subsidiary of Florida Power and Light, and they're one of the largest developers of renewable resources in the country. And this relationship is contracted between AMP and DG AMP Solar, Distributed Generation AMP Solar. And under this agreement, Nextera builds, owns, and operates all the solar sites. The first site that was built, which was the largest utility-scale project, was in Bowling Green. It's a 20-megawatt site on 165 acres. Since that time, AMP has continued to evaluate sites for their 132 members, and with the goal of eventually subscribing, I believe, over 60 megawatts of total generation in the project. I think we're on the way to about halfway there, and there's other sites that are still being evaluated. But under that agreement, Nextera basically takes care of the facility, and then AMP purchases the power from the project. And as a participant in the project, we get our allocated portion of the project. So, even though all the power's really essentially electrically flowing into our system, we're only allocated a portion of it based on our subscription. And one of the really nice things about this project, it's one of the most cost-effective resources that we have in our portfolio, at an estimated $33 a megawatt hour for the 25-year life of the project. So, what AMP asks of these sites, and as we move forward and take a look at Staunton, you'll see how that fits in, but ultimately, they want the site to be owned by the member, the site to be reasonably close to our electrical system, not heavily forested, with a relatively small amount of clearing, and that it should be relatively flat with little or no site grading. So, I worked, when we started this process, worked hand-in-hand with Chris and his group to try to find sites in Pickle, which was no easy task, when you're trying to come up with a project that cited, in this case, was about eight acres total. And we ended up with this project, which it wasn't just an open eight-acre cornfield, which would have been very easy to deal with. It was the Staunton School site, and then, as I mentioned, the Heckmans own the adjacent property, as they also own the Custom Arisol facility to the south. So, basically, what we envisioned with this project, as I reached out and spoke with, made contact with the Pickle Schools and the Heckmans and Custom Arisol, was that, you know, is there was a possibility we could join these site properties together, trade some properties, and end up with about eight acres. This was the original layout several years ago, and from 1.1 megawatts, this actually grew to all over 1.7 megawatt sites. We were actually able to grow the footprint of the solar project. So, just to touch on some of the benefits of building this project in Pickle, most of our resources are at power plants that are far away from Pickle, so we have to pay to transmit that power into Pickle. The nice thing about a distributed project like the solar project, it's in the city, so you don't have to pay for the cost of transmission. It's generation that's on the ground in Pickle, which they call capacity. It actually provides some electrical benefits in terms of voltage support. It can provide some backup generation if needed. And then the whole process in terms of building the project, you know, local contractors, all state of Ohio employees along the process were building this project. It was a pretty innovative use of the property. I know the school board was very supportive of the reuse of the site. I think it has really become a flagship project for the city, and I think it's a really awesome source of local pride. There's a, you know, large focus on renewable resources that don't contribute negatively to the environment. And when we put this along with our wind and hydro projects that we're a part of, the city power supply is over 20% renewable right now. And we're also going to have the opportunity to use this as an educational tool for the students. Part of the training that we receive allows us to give tours to the groups that are interested. So, to step back in time a little bit, this is a pretty dated aerial, but it shows where the school was, and, you know, the school's been down for some time since the schools were built, but it kind of shows you what we're working with in terms of the existing The process in terms of the project really started early this year, so, again, we kind of entered into this several years ago, but once we started working, there was a bunch of significant tasks that had to be completed in a fairly short amount of time. So, we started with the tree clearing on the site, followed that up a few months later with the stump removal. They're very large trees, and, you know, we had to basically remove the stumps. If you don't remove the stumps and grind them, the areas can, you could get recesses on the property over time, which wouldn't be good for the solar installation. And so, all those were removed and regraded, and those new tops always laid in and layers and compacted. And the final kind of site preparation piece was the east property line. Again, there's a tree line there that really wasn't an issue with building the solar array, but it is with the shading. Shading's an issue with, obviously, with the solar design, so we had to clear the trees, a good portion of the trees on the east property line to increase the productivity of the solar facility. So, we had our alignment meeting with Nextera, and Vaughn is out of Carrier, Ohio, who we've worked with over the years, really good electrical contractor. They served as the general on the contract. At any given time, there were about 25 employees on the site between Vaughn, the solar installation company, and then the civil folks that were working underneath Vaughn. But one of the very first tasks, again, we kicked this thing off really at the end of April, and by the time that they had mobilized and got their construction trailers and equipment and staging, and started receiving materials, in the middle of May, we began driving piles. There were 731 supports that were driven, and the site was really ideal. Out of 731, there was only one rejected pile, so it went very well. And also, the thing that has to happen upfront is you have to lay all the electrical infrastructure in the ground. So, you know, there's a lot of trenching and conduit installation, and then these piles that were driven. You can also see where the racking is kind of laid out in advance. And then with this, towards the end of May, you can see that up towards the crane pumps into the project, the racking is beginning to be installed on the piles that have been driven, the 731 piles, and the racking is what supports the solar panels. We determined actually the racking was supplied also by a local company out of Cincinnati, so Ohio Company provided that. Solar panel installation started May 21st, about that time period. It's hard to imagine, but there's 7,672 panels on this project, and each of those panels, I think, is a 350-watt panel, so generating, I believe, 37 volts. And so, that was quite a process, and the company that did the solar piece of the project basically installed the piles, installed the racking, and installed all the solar panels. In the meantime, we were required to extend the electrical system to the sites. Our employees basically did some pole replacements, installed some new underground cable, installed a switching point on the southwest corner of the property, and all in advance of the installation of the new transformer. Here's a progress picture, which, if you haven't seen these pictures, Brett Reed is a certified operator of the drones, so we can get up and take some pretty impressive shots of the area, and he's got his license to do that. And that shows things moving along fairly well, June 4th. And the panel's totally installed by the 14th. On the 28th, two weeks later, the electrical infrastructure was completed, the inverters were installed, and the system was connected to our grid early in the afternoon on the So, what remains to be completed is right now they're continuing to do commissioning of the project, working out some of the bugs. We've got a few issues that they'll probably resolve here within the next few weeks. I've asked them to hold off with landscaping of the site until the fall, because there's no reason to install this stuff in the middle of the summer. I've always found over the years, if you're going to plan, do it in the fall, so you have the fall and the spring growing seasons. And we're going to be doing some other stuff on the site in terms of, we're looking at the sidewalk infrastructure in front of the sites in pretty bad shape. So, some things just to kind of clean the site up and really make it ready, and we'll plan to have a ribbon cutting sometime later on this year. Any questions on the project? Any questions? Any questions on, on the project? Any questions you may be receiving?
How, how close does it come into the 1.7 megawatt?
So, interesting enough, John, the, soon after the project was energized, the meter was set. And I think within a few days, the template was corrected and the meter and the peak demand was listed at 1.728, I believe. But, but what was even more interesting is they said that when you have a clear cool day, the heat is actually reduces the output. So, we, between that time and now, we've actually had some cool days, and the project's output over 1.9 megawatts. So, it's rated to generate that, that rating at the, at that hot day, probably like a 90-degree day. So, it's performing well. And again, they'll complete their commissioning to guarantee performance testing over the next few weeks.
And are we looking at putting any more sites in around Pickwa?
AMP continues to look at sites, and we're actively working on a site right now.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you. Wonderful report. Exciting to hear and see, and wonderful. Any other questions or comments from the Commissioner?
I think it's wonderful. It's a good job, seriously, from start to finish.
Okay. Anything else from you?
No, that's it. Thank you.
All right. We will move to our Commissioners' comments. We'll start with Commissioner Lee.
Oh, okay. Well, hey, I want to say thank you to all the people who were involved with the, the video for the city of Pickwa and this small town. Watched it, loved the song, liked watching the video. And I'm, I'm very proud to say that I'm from Pickwa when I pass this on. Of course, there have been a lot of detractors, and one of the biggest complaints that I heard was that I've never seen anybody do yoga along the river. I'm like, well, you come to Pickwa, maybe you will. But another of the complaints, on a more serious note, is the lack of diversity. Someone pointed out that Pickwa has a 3% diverse African-American population, yet it wasn't very well reflected in that. And I'm like, you know, people had the opportunity to participate, some don't. I said, and if you look real close, I'm in it. So, that's my 1%, I guess. But it was a great video. I loved it. And I encourage any, any and everybody to watch it and come to this small town. The next thing I want to talk about is civility, being civil in Pickwa. I had a call over the weekend, and I was on vacation, but I still got the call where somebody went onto somebody's property and changed some flags without their permission. And the person was, that went onto the property was upset because the flags were in the wrong order. US Code lists flags go into a certain order, and the person who owned the property had them in a different order, and that person saw the people on his property, was upset, called the police. Police handled it. But I want people to understand, we need to be civil. I mean, if you disagree with something that somebody's doing, go talk to that person. Don't go and take it upon yourself and violate the law in order to get your desired result. It's not going to work well for you. It may wind up in you getting charges, and it's more important that you talk to somebody to get your desired outcome as opposed to violating a law to get that. So, I want people to be more civil. Other than that, I'm looking forward to the city picnic. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Short?
I'd like to also echo the sentiments about the This Small Town video. That was, that was really fun, and the Commission got to participate in that. And I want to give kudos to Mayor Hines for kind of organizing and overseeing that project. You did a wonderful job.
Yep.
And I greatly appreciate it. I know a lot of people did. And the Fourth, excuse me, the Fourth of July ceremony was wonderful. Had a great time, and I'm glad to see all the citizens that came out. So, that's it for me.
Commissioner Vote?
Well, Chris brought something up about being civil. I am tired. Last, this week, I got three calls, and I was so verbally abused that I'm embarrassed to even say they was calls. Now, this is over a situation on Manure Avenue where I turned this place in a year ago. And our code enforcement, I don't know what they're doing, covering the junk up with a tarp isn't cleaning it up. And I keep saying something to Gary. He says, they're working on it. The people are tired of it. And I'm tired of the nasty swearing. I've been called a lot of things this week. So, people, please be civil. When you call your Commissioner, we get a complaint on something, we turn it in. That's all we can do. We can't go fix it. So, I think that there's all I have to say. I've been abused again.
Thank you. Commissioner Martin?
Nothing tonight.
I appreciate the, the comments about the video, and I have to say, there were so many people that made that video possible, that came together for it, and I give thanks for those. We put calls out through a variety of, of means, through Facebook, through Twitter, through the paper, just a variety of ways, the city website, to get people to come out and be part of it. So, I'm really, I'm really, really proud of the people that came out. You know, I wish we had more people that came out, but the opportunity was there for people to come out. And, and I, you know, it is a great way to look at our town, and I have heard so many people who don't live here who have said how meaningful it was for them, and they're from a small town as well. So, I, and that was part of the, the, as we put it together, we were thinking about that all small towns could relate to it. And really, it does have that wonderful feel for wherever you may come from, if you're from a small town. And on the civility note, you know, there was a wonderful editorial in the paper this week by a young man, and I cannot remember his name, and it was about Mr. Rogers.
Went to school with the, his mom.
Yes, yes. It's Shelley Underwood's nephew, I believe.
Yes.
And Mr. Rogers is somebody who is near and dear to my heart. And, you know, and I really appreciated his words. I really appreciated the way that he put forth Mr. Rogers' lessons and Mr. Rogers' vision for humanity. And I think that not only in our city, but in our country and world, we need to pay attention to those simple, beautiful lessons of Mr. Rogers more often. And the most important thing is to be kind and to remember that what you put out there, whether it be through a telephone call or whether you put it out there on Facebook, being kind is a gift not only to the people that you come in contact with, but it's also a gift to yourself. And so, I commend the young man that wrote that article. I encourage all of our citizens to go read it and to remember that our neighbors are each other, and we are here to build one another up and to not tear each other down. And the more we do that, the more powerful we will be as a city, the more our community will shine, and the more we will become the people that we have been created to be. So, I commend him. And I just wanted to say that because I think it went along with what Commissioner Lee said and obviously what Commissioner Vote said. So, let's go out and remember who our neighbors are, and let's remember to be kind. So, that is all I have this evening. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.